And of course, I think that we have usually, some of them will have regional competition, some do not. Like food and beverage, we had a second place winner and we've had for the last 10 years, a first place winner in the study. This is Sue Davis from Jolco High School. And she prepares and prepares that student and really worked hard to get her student to be able to be successful. And her reason for it, and Sue wasn't able to be there last night, is because of, she has a student right now that will take advantage of the award that goes to Johnson and Wales. Johnson and Wales cost your opponent to about $60,000 to go. Very expensive. And she's trying to get that, she wants that child to win first place because they'll give a free ride on it. So, you know, their teachers have in mind, I think they have their interest of their students. They're trying to do, not just because they can even win or have winners, but we have several, we have, you know, we've had first place winners in lots of areas before. But if they're, you know, some things will let them go on to the nationals and we've had some of them go on to the nationals to compete. Last year, we had a girl in business professional who went on to San Antonio and competed on the national level. So, you know, we're just, there are lots of competitions and I think it shows, I know it's money spent on it, but we also spend money on ball, don't we, and all those other things.
Yeah.
And that's fine, I'm not getting sorry, I think that's wonderful. But our students, we can say that our students can compete with anywhere, anyone across the study, if not the nation. So, I think that's a good thing for us.
Sharon, I think-
Do you know how many percentage of Campbell County high school students go to college?
Okay. It's around fifty, I think now, about 55% of them in Campbell County and they have divided it out and up here, you may know more about that answer.
I'm talking about academic, I'm not talking about like trade students.
Yeah, but academic.
Academic. It's about 20 something percent.
Well, it's study probably.
Yeah.
Study.
Okay. The reason why I'm getting to this, isn't Campbell County High School more kids at vocational that need to be steered toward vocational jobs in actual reality of what's happening when they walk out of the door?
The jobs and the future part of those, we realize and we're under assumption that, you know, just going to high school is not enough. We think you need to go to the technology center or you need to go a year or two, you know. But we've decided that many years ago. We're all for that. We want students to go off. That's the reason is doing enrollment helps a lot of their kids to see that they can go off to college. I think that's one of the reasons that let them see how to enroll and be successful. But usually around 25% that actually do it study, you know, and that's what, the colleges now are doing to keep the kids there and graduating. That's the reason they've raised, in my opinion, I guess I better say my opinion, that they've raised that ACT score up. A student that makes 26 or 27 in UT, same as 27 in another, you know, they're gonna have a student that can be successful and then can graduate because they're having the stuff they can graduate too, like we're having.
Which means-
That's right.
If they're gonna get students.
They might get left out.
Which means that we need to focus a lot. I'm in the trades. I know there's a window of workforce. And I talk all the time about these schools, how they can train these kids coming out. I could hire many of them as they come out of the construction crews because it's hard to find them. My question is, you, as the director, you've been in this a long time.
Yes.
And you've seen it go from year to year, funding goes from year to year. You know what an optimal, as you said, quality program is. Do you feel like with what money you're receiving this year, that you'll get in 2013, '14, that if you'll still be able to have a quality program?
I have spent over like 45 years.
I know.
Okay. I would love more.
But do you feel like it's going forward or do you think it's staying steady? Or do you feel like lack of funding may pose a problem?
Of course, it's, the funding is staying steady because basically it's just paying teacher salaries and that.
But could we do more?
We can always do more, you know, just like we need to-
To make a more quality program.
Right. We could, we could add, you know, it's, we need to, you know, for the number of students, we have to make sure because the funding is based on having students during that classroom, you know. So, you've got to make sure that it's gonna be there. We can always use more money.
And I don't, I don't wanna keep pressing this, but I did this with Ms. Walker. And I wanna do it with everyone. Because at some point in time, if you want to advance your education, and I know money's not the answer to everything, okay? I'm not saying go get a big barrel of money and give it to you and say, but you've been in this a long time. You know things that may be able to, that we could say, we want a champion with more funding that'll really directly affect those kids' education. To me, as a board member, that's what I want. I don't wanna come in here and say, alright, yeah, we're gonna get by, we're gonna be able to do what we've done over the years, we got this lack of funding. But you all, the professionals at this, you all know the system a whole heck of a lot better than we do. And we have to rely on what you all tell us through the director to whether we fund something or not. And I'm at the point where we need to step up and fight for education. Okay? There's a funding body in this county that needs to fund education. And that's why I hope that you all will tell us, because it's in our duty, if you tell us, hey, we need this more equipment, like you just said. And that's what I'm hoping we can do, have these workshops. Let's not just gloss everything over and say, hey, yeah, everything's fine and we'll make it next year and we're gonna do fine. But are we really going forward? Are we, are we bettering the system for these kids? Or are we saying, okay, that's it? That's it? And that's, you know, that's, that's the way it's been for five, 10, 15 years here and that's the way it's gonna be. So, I, do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
Of course, I guess there would never be enough of them.
No, there probably would.
Probably never would be. As long as we can continue to add the most up-to-date, of course, cutting edge things that we can do is what we need, that's what we need to be doing for our, you know, for my teachers, the teachers I've had, that's why I need to be able to offer them. Of course, we can always use more, you know, the equipment money, everything, and then the purpose is stayed the same all these years, you know, no matter how many of your horses or the cost of everything out there. So, if we double that, that would be wonderful.
But you know what other systems we've got.
Yes.
And I'd say, and-
I know what else we've got.
And yeah, and they say, well, they got more property tax money, they got more this. But again, it comes back to the fundamental question, do we want to improve our system based on your laws, ideals of funding or whatever? Or do we want to just let you all come in here and tell us everything's fine, we'll make it, we'll budget for it? So, I hope you'll convey that with the director, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
If there's money and, and when this all process is done and Mr. Postman says, you know, hey, we need X amount of dollars, where we gonna get it from? And I think it's our duty to say, hey, we need to fund it or we need to ask somebody to fund it for us. So, I just hope that that's, that's all.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
If you had more money, would you put it toward equipment, training? How would you use that money?
Well, I do a needs assessment with my teachers every year. They tell me what they need and then I try to decide what else they need. Just like I went to Jolco and I didn't realize that Jack and I shared a couple labs. He buys a lab and I buy a computer lab every five years. And it's, you know, I had Mr. Bear over there and he couldn't install the new stuff because it was Jack that was buying it. I was next door and he was incredible, just that we needed, you know. So, instead of buying the other for Miss Sue that I had planned on doing, I thought she could wait, that's the reason I put in the budgets this time. And went in and I, we, Jack came up, I bought 12 computers and he bought the rest, you know. And so, next year, then he's gonna do the other lab for us. So, you know, we have to, I work with Jack and trying to get our money, but yes, you know, like we have a new class welding that we need to add, you know, we could spend a hundred thousand dollars in there as a rock and a hack. But I don't think that's practical either. I think we need, you know, certain things that we need and they'll all learn to hear after us.
Again, that's my point. Hopefully, we're doing it.
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully, we're heading up.
Yes. And probably nice suggestion is that next year, all these teacher systems, we take that money and then we can spend it on equipment and equipment.
And Mr. Postman, where's these three teachers gonna go? They just gonna land in the system?
Sharon, now that we've talked with the money's for the BGB as designated, as it's been funded this year, we may be able to keep them this year. What the state has done is to increase the number of students, as you shared with-
So, they'll be doing the same job?
They, that they, that they're doing now.
Okay.
And they'll be able to take more students and that's the big work of the change. And let me say this, this morning, I had the privilege to have had a director's meeting in Sevier County and got to visit one of the state-of-the-art high schools getting ready to open this fall. I didn't realize how all the high schools and some of these eastern counties didn't have the CTE program. And they were excited, but they showed the cosmetology room, they said this would be a first for some of the area. That surprised me that a lot of these systems didn't have all of these masses. And they were really excited about that. I thought we've had that for some time.
You realize that we save our students if they would go into their cosmetology. It's $15,000 now to go for Shandsys School Review. We can offer most hours right here at Campbell County High School.
Thank you. Come back another week, Sharon.
They have to, you know, pass their state boards and stuff, but it's really, you know, things that, the cost of it, the cost that we can save them and what we have to offer our students. And like the EMT course, they can offer there at school, they have to set for exam, that's that thunderdawls that sometimes kids wouldn't have, be able to do, if they can pass that, they'll be ready to go on annuals or something. So, there are lots of things that, that we are working with our, our teachers and trying to be successful with.
Sharon, to pick up, oh, go ahead, Dana.
One question.
Yes.
Those machines are in the welding class, the lathe and stuff, were they bought when the high school was first built?
Part of them probably.
Part of them probably.
Yeah, we bought, Mr. Lawson, I think we bought in five of probably the ones that are there. And so, they need to be declared the lap day.
Absolutely, yeah, they're, yeah, her and everything, all the work from within there.
Yeah, they've had the-
Sharon, what do you credit your high graduation rate to?
Uh, because, you know, all kids come to school because of CTE. You know, they stay in there, they stay in cosmetology, they stay in building trades, they come because of that. And that's-
You know, because if you look at a report card, the county as a whole, with the two high schools, 82%, you're at nine, so you gotta be proud of that.
Very proud of it. And I think it shows that we have a need for our students, there is a great need for our students in this county.
Yes, Sharon, of course, we've talked about this several times, one, initiatives that that's behind the core curriculum and what the state wants to do is make the CTE as part of the general program area. It's like with the part test, it's starting as early as kindergarten, it's talking about career readiness. And the test that we're gonna be taking is all about being career ready, so it's from the get-go. And that's the whole mindset of the change with some of the initiatives.
The training I've been doing on core curriculum, I think our teachers in career technical will have the easiest way to adapt to it. They're used to problems and solving it and I think that, you know, that, I think it will be much easier for them in doing those problems in your regular activity courses and stuff. But they're used to giving a problem for a child, like a roof, and they give it to Benji and they do, and then they kind of figure it out. I think, I think our students will do much better. I really do.
Well, we hate to see you go.
Thank you.
We really do.
Forty-five years is time.
I want to stick around one more anyway.
I wanna, I wanna ask Sharon to pick up on Richter's theme about where we're going and, and it's really, this story last night kind of put it in retrospect of what we've done considering, as Sharon said, that the, the funding is just flat. I think Dora said last night that she had a, in CTE, I guess, to be certified, then you have to come up and, to supervise one day to, to-
Mendez, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, Dora said a lady from Clinton came in to her classroom and sat with her all day and everything. And at the end of the day, she sat down and told Dora, said, I've never seen, I haven't seen anything like this in East Tennessee, this, the health class that she had. Pick up, pick up on that, Sharon, because I thought that was pretty remarkable.
And that's what Dora said, the lady from Clinton High School. She said she thought surrounding counties were not having anything at all. And she spent the day with her. And she thought the technology and the equipment that she has in her classroom, you know, she didn't have either. She said she was appalled at the few things out there. So, you know, and a lot of it has to do, and I've always based mine on, if a teacher wants something and needs it, you know. I haven't bought a lot of stuff, just put it in there and said, you do it. They have to want to do it and I try to find a way to get it. So, and, you know, we have some grants available, we're trying to write for and try to get some extra money. Auto mechanics, we wrote, nearly $9,000, gone grant three or four years ago. All that stuff gets outdated after a while. But, you know, trying to keep it up, it's very expensive for us.
Sharon, on your, on the verge of retirement, what's your biggest fear? What's your biggest fear about the direction? You know, what, what can we do to ensure?
I want to make sure that our programs as a leader do, do continue. That's my biggest concern, I want that.
Because it's a program that can't get lost in the shuffle. I mean, you go to the banquet, you see the success that's out there, so.
We need it for our kids, our kids need it.
Have you helped Donnie pick your replacement yet?
No, I have. I can help him though. I'd be glad to help him.
We've chatted some.
Anything else for me, Sharon?
Thank you for what you've done.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sharon.
I took time under business meals and I still remember how to type today.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Ms. Linda Campbell, special ed.
And I can say special ed at Campbell County Jolco High School would not mind that.
Pretty good.
Okay. Special ed, as we know it was, correct, it would not be saving fast. We did like roughly in 40 seconds. If it has more rules, nothing can be done. I mean, we're live cousins, we're here so planned, we're live cousins, everything that we do needs to be. But anyway. This is your special ed person name. And this is who we have in school program. Okay, they do their system. And we get general process firms and chairs. And I believe the system is produced and what to type them, federal or general purpose. And then I also can send you some of our assistants. And these, these are assistants who are assigned to conference development to the state and state class, which are more severe. And then we have our best driver. And on the best, we have a student. And the doctor, please. I'll type the names, you should taste it. And this is your teacher's person. And we have them right there. You also have special ed director, you have, you know, coordinators, you have, you have psychologists, and special ed unit. They gotta be in school. And then I have a root care, Karen Miller, and I've got a census club, Sony, you know, probably that progress one by day, I think, guaranteed to be. And Sony, we have so much data on the staff, I have to, you know, confidential files, I have to get, and Sony, they say, these vouchers is the secretary of special ed. So, that's your personnel. Okay, what happened to special ed, we'll go casually, is on this page, the insurance hit $1,000. And I know we pay like $16,000, you know, and I don't regret any of it, I feel that. That's the reason why I've been planning this. And then we lost the, our decrease in payroll was $1,000. The way we cut that was we cut one special ed teaching position and we increased it three or four special ed assistants. Now, all the personnel, all the decreases will be absorbed because people have the talent and the depth, so no one will lose a job. There might be some people transferring those to, no one will lose a job. And we're running into, with insurance, and everyone needs insurance. I totally understand that, but we're running into a time of insurance, which is going to increase year after year after year out of that fund that is different. So, that's what's happening there. On special ed, it's speed insurance, special ed, we're everything special ed. We got features, we have a crowd, we have a vest, we have everything special. Type for all stretch ones. For everyone and that's what we type for special. Especially, you're dealing with a lot of unknowns. Right, if the best pairs up, we have to type it. Grant, you should do that, you find the minutes. We had a child transfer kid from here, he had to pay $3,000 for one case. Especially is best of each child. So, I guess I, I don't, I didn't really know much more about special ed, because we have a, the name of special ed department.
Linda, I have a question about the insurance, you know, individual, one plus one, or family, do you pay, you know, each one of them?
We pay 82% of everybody.
Either one of the, one of the three.
Pay 82%. For a teacher, I believe, sky sending 45 or 55% of insurance money. And the individual, I think pays 80%. So, you're not paying your assistant. Like I said, I wanted to insure, but you're paying this, you're paying for this insurance and increasing it, like I said, but fund that is different. And this year, we have not managed to have it because I cannot replace people who have desire to pass. So, like I said, I can explain to you, that's because there's something happening. We're working on closing the gap, we might have achieved in last year, but it's not really the gap.
Linda, how many students do you have in that program?
We've probably got about 850.
Eight fifty?
Yeah, about that. I mean, you get in federal funds for, the way our federal funds are bigger, for every child, I check it one day, you're missing a part for our federal fund. And last year, for every child in special ed, we got $1,900. That was it, that was for, not Hammond's school, that was Hammond's, for this child. That's our federal fund.
Linda, how much did the sequestration, I mean, I imagine it had an effect on that decrease in your old's federal money too?
I think they held it this year. More than $1,400.
You know, I keep asking about the sequestration because it's a really big deal. I mean, it's hitting everybody. It is, it is ridiculous the way that the federal government is running itself in Washington, this DC, both parties. And it's hurting the ki, it's hurting our kids, it's hurting our educators, it's ridiculous the fact that they can't come up with a budget up there because 40,000 here, 50,000 here, that's a, that's a big lick down here on the, on the local level, so.
Ms. Campbell, a couple of years ago, Dale Campbell told us that we didn't have a building ready by 2014, January, or February. And a program ready, that there was a new law that was gonna take effect then that said that if a parent wanted to take their kid out of our system because they felt like they was not being educated to the best of our, what they thought it should be, that if they decided to take it to Knox County, so to speak, or like Strawberry Plains where they have, probably right now, was up to them, that kid there. That money followed. Now, we would lose that money. And, and it could be one parent, it could be 10, it could be 30. Have you and Mr. Postman, do we have any kind of plan ready for that? Because I understand that Dale had asked if we could join Norris, but we turned him down.
Yeah, it's part of, it's all tied to this part test. And see, now you've got like Memphis and Knoxville, an example of what we're all gonna be looking at, you know, they have these targeted schools that parents can take if they want to now if those schools are, it's the same, this would be the same thing with the, with the special ed program.
Are we gonna wait to see if a parent comes forward to do that before we act? Are we going to enroll in a program? Or are we gonna institute our own program, use one of our own buildings for that capacity? Or are we just gonna wait until that happens?
At least the slates are gonna come to us yet. It's that part test. And that part test is-
But they're doing it already.
No, that, on the-
And he asked me if we had anyone that wanted to come in.
There were like 20 slots in there.
Yes, and we didn't have any of them to go. We didn't have any.
And from what I understand, Oak Ridge, now, and all we would have to do is place the transportation to go down.
And the parents didn't want to go. But we asked.
Well, how eight hundred, we didn't have 20 kids.
What determines, I'm, I'm new here, what determines a kid to be in special ed education?
We did tests, we did psychological tests. And there's 13 kids remain in category. And if you're intellectually disabled, you're out of Q and stuff. And if you got ill, then you know what he says, you got, you got blind, you got deaf, you got special line, you're special, you're like, it depends on the testing result. We do psychological.
Just because the kid though is handicapped doesn't mean he goes to special ed.
No, that's five of four kids.
Okay.
And we try to keep kids in regular aid, and they could be in regular aid as much as possible.
And Linda, y'all continually check their IEPs yearly and update that?
We have the IEPs a lot. Every time something changes, we have a leader who directs this, we have an attorney. Their evaluation was a three-year. That wasn't paid all the things that they need to try.
Do you ever have any of them come out of there and go into regular aid?
We have a lot of kids that go into regular, they're in regular, we didn't encourage them. So, we have a lot of them that are in regular.
Any other questions for Ms. Linda?
So, her budget together is about $2,500. That program, is that right, Donna?
Odd. And that includes some things.
You know, that's only about $3,000 a student, whereas the county-wide, it's about $8,000 a student. Why, why is that, Donna?
Well, see, they get added, paid the monies for those students in addition to regular aid and monies, is that what you mean? Because of the services that they get, they've got added monies, regular aid.
It would look like it would be higher then, but that-
It should get, it's overall.
So, do they get the base ADM rate plus the additional $3,000?
It's a percentage, Linda.
Yeah. It's based on options.
It's in addition to.
Yeah.
It's only $3,000 a student, a program.
Well, but they're-
The county-wide is 80%. Oh, they get it plus? Yeah. It's, special education students are funded much higher than the regular students.
They get the federal funds, they get really the BEP funds like everyone else does. And then-
Then they get a, beyond that.
Yeah, it's, it's weighted.
It's a weighted scale for that.
It's according to the options, I believe, so much is weighted on the now.
Now, I've got that, I've got it if you want it.
Is it non, is it non-options, I don't have here with me.
So, so each of our students today gets $8,000 per year. Close to, okay. The special education gets the 8,000 plus the 3,000.
Weighted, yeah. How that works? How, how that works?
This is how the, this is how the BEP is spent, is there four special. And I've said the federal, in one day a year, is obviously single part. And they give nineteen hundred dollars per child, federal. This is how your BEP money is used. Nothing in special ed is seen. Okay. This is called options of service. And if you will look in this little box here, this tells you an option one. For every ninety-one option-one kids, I send the county in a teacher. Okay, and option one, this is wrong, this is the old, this. Okay, and this describes, it's less than an hour a week. Option two, the kids are served one to three hours a week. And for every seventy-three kids, they send a teaching physician in. So the more the hours they're in special ed, the more BEP funds they bring into the county. Okay, you get to your option threes, the kids are in special ed four to eight hours a week. And for every forty-six option-three kids you have, they send in a teaching physician. Option fives is they're in special ed fourteen to twenty-two hours per week. And for every fifteen kids, they send in a teacher physician. Option six, um, option six is they have an assistant with them all day, and they're in regular ed four hours. And for every two kids that are option six, they send in a teaching physician. Your option sevens, they're in special ed twenty-three hours or more. And for every ten kids, the county gets a teaching physician. Your option eights are your kids here in special ed thirty-two or five hours a week, and will save two related services. And for every six kids, they send in a teaching physician to the county. That's how the money comes in.
So, let me explain, let's just say option two. We've got students that are only in special education, one to three hours per week?
Like speech.
Oh, okay.
Speech kids.
All right. Speak, or sight, or hearing, or whatever.
Yeah, speech or language, yeah.
Okay, so, so the kid's got a-
And then if we've got a child who has trouble only with reading.
Right.
They define a map. We pull them out only for reading, or we're doing inclusion with them in the regular program, only in the area that they're having problems with.
Okay, okay.
That's what we do.
Ms. Campbell, these eight hundred kids we're talking about here, do they have to take ACT?
No.
Next year?
Unless they're going to college.
They don't have to, just not being a safe mandate?
If they're going to college, they do. If they plan on going to college, they take it.
Even the ones who are just in there one to three hours a week?
They can take it, they, you know, they can take it, yeah.
So the parents are going, if they inform your department that they're going to college?
Well, we discuss that, okay, we have IP meetings, and we always discuss the ACT at the IP meeting, with the parents.
With the parents.
And with the child.
So if they say, my kid is going to go to college, you're going to inform them, being a parent, take ACT. Will that reflect on the whole system-wide, Mr. Poston?
Yes.
Yeah, and one of the things that she's not touched on with the new law is, all of our special needs kids are going to be tested as regular kids. And, and the standard test, especially with the park test, and there will be some that will have portfolios that will be identified, and that, that's, that's a separate, separate issue.
Are we, are we up far around the parent today?
We're doing the base weekly.
We're all still in training.
I mean, now, we made our achievement last, last time. We made our achievement. We, we did not make closing the gap, and the way closing the gap worked was where we made our achievement, especially if kids may have gone, and I believe there was two schools of teachers, and one of them, the year before, thirty-two percent of the kids were proficient, and it went up to maybe thirty-five percent. Both schools were pretty much like that. One school, the regular ed went down to maybe, maybe five or six points. Therefore, there was not a gap. They had closed the gap between regular ed and special ed. At the other school, they went up from the thirty-five up to fifty. So therefore, there was a gap. So.
Would you agree that these kids are going to have to have, lack of the better word, a little more special attention, get them ready for these tests?
What the state is saying is, and I've watched it a long time, if we can keep them, if we can have teachers, like co-teachers, in the regular classroom or inclusion, they're much better off. If they can make it in the regular classroom, then they aren't in a situation.
They are?
Yeah.
Are you?
Yeah.
So we're, we feel comfortable, you feel comfortable, your department's covering that as far as enough intervention and whatever you need?
Well, like Sharon said, everyone needs, we need more staff, everyone needs more staff, regular ed needs more staff, you know, we do.
Ms. Campbell, one of the problems that we see when students are brought in for truancy and different things, that's where I, uh, kind of find out what's going on. Some things I see is, if you get a kid comes into school, and he's just a, he doesn't fit into anything, he crawls under the chairs, kicks the teacher's shins, and just disrupts the whole classroom, then the psychologist can't see him till he's killed everybody. Uh, he, he can't be tested to spend in that class for thirty days. Uh, why can't they see these kids without waiting thirty days?
Well, usually, if they're a very severe kid, we'll go ahead and test them, I mean, if they're-
Well, now, that's not what they tell us, is that right, Nancy?
That's true.
And I've got, we've got one in our church down there that kills everybody in the church house, and he can't qualify for a special education, but, and they say he don't go to school so many days.
Where is it?
Before he can be tested.
Will stay out of that.
He's got a Mohawk haircut, I know him well, because I see him all the time. But, now, we have problems like that. And, uh, a lot of kids in special education, and I know you have to go by the government guidelines, but, uh, a lot of times, a kid that needs to be in special education is not because of his IQ, it's because of his behavior.
And then we look at-
And he can destroy the whole classroom, and the others can't learn anything because of his behavior. But we can't get a psychologist or nobody, they don't qualify.
Well, we look at emotionally disturbed, and to see if they are emotionally disturbed. And then, if not, regular ed needs to set a classroom for, for lack of kids who aren't special ed. Most of your special ed kids, unless they're emotionally disturbed, are not going to, or, I'll say, they're not going to be your meanest kids in the school.
I, I, I understand that. They're not all, sometimes I just think they're meanish, but you still got to deal with them. And, and so, that, that's what we're talking about. Uh, can we get them tested sooner than we do sometimes?
Well, if you'll send me a referral, we'll do it.
All right, we'll, we'll do that. Ms. Leach, you remember that. We've been listening to these stories all year. If we get rid of that type kid, and the best forty-seven, we'd be doing good.
But the thing is, when you put them in special ed, they're still in the school. They're covered by federal law, by federal law. And you can't discipline them. I mean, you can't send them on high school.
They won't let you whip them.
Nope, no motion.
Maybe it wouldn't help, I don't know, but I know we have that problem.
Yeah, I know. And they're covered by federal law.
Okay.
Anything else for Ms. Linda?
Yeah.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, is it okay with everybody next Tuesday? We'll, we'll hear from, uh, Mr. Cannon and Dr. Goins?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the budget workshop's adjourned. We'll take a five to ten minute recess, and we'll reconvene in just a few moments.
Hail most county, gracious God in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for everything you've done for us. Glad, dear Lord, that you just give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for our children, our teachers, our schools, and just help us, dear Lord, to get along with one another and do the right thing. We thank you for everything you've done for us. We love and praise you. In these things, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Quick, release the players.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, if everyone will sign in.
I can't see this thing out of here. She sits here.
All right, Madam Clerk, announce the tenant, please.
Josh White.
Oh, I'm sorry.
George, present. Collins, present. Rick Moore, present. Hill, present. Lawson, present. Lawrence, present. Ford, present. Dr. Brink, present. Wilson, present.
Thank you.
Where is the demo?
Recognition of guests, we thank everyone for coming out this evening. Appreciate it for the May School Board meeting. To the teachers out there, the end is in sight, a couple more weeks. We appreciate everything you've done for us this year, to our teachers and our administrators, so thank you. Next up, the approval of the consign agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion, President.
Motion by Mr. Oark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Birch, any discussion on the consign agenda? All right, all in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Birch, yes. Collins, yes. Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ford, yes. Dr. Brink, yes. Wilson, yes. Marsha, yes.
All right. Next up is the approval of our regular agenda. There is an addendum on there, and a removal. We are removing, under items for action, section A, we're removing that. And under items for action, we're going to add, consider approving Campbell County High School soccer program and supplemental funding. And then also, two more addendums, to approve the director of schools to apply for virtual schools in Campbell County for K through eight and nine through twelve. And then the last addendum is to, to approve an RFP to go out for the virtual schools, K through eight, nine through twelve. And on the virtual schools, we're not bound by anything under that. This is just allowing, there's a end of May deadline on the virtual schools for the, for the system to apply for virtual schools, and the end of the month is the deadline. So this is just to allow the director to go ahead and start the paperwork, and then we'll hopefully have a workshop next Tuesday, not much more detailed, uh, on the virtual schools. So, but Dale, I'm pretty clear on that, we're not legally bound by nothing, we're not spending any money tonight on virtual schools. It just allows the director to move forward with his, his paperwork. So with those removals and additions, what's the pleasure of the board on the regular agenda?
So, Mr. Birch.
Motion by Mr. Birch, second by Mr. Miller, any discussion on the regular agenda? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. George, yes. Collins, yes. Chris Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ford, yes. Dr. Brink, yes. Wilson, yes.
Thank you. Next up, comments from the chair. I want to first off say thank you to Ms. Sharon Rydner. Last night was the CTE vocational banquet at Campbell County High School. Really enjoyed it, another fine job by her and her staff and her department last night. Really good to see that program and what it's producing in our community, and it was a really, really worthwhile banquet, and I appreciate the invite. Also, at this time, I'm going to insert into the record, if there's no objection, this is the Campbell County High School award winners. This is the top ten in the class, local scholarship winners, where kids have been, gotten scholarships for in the, you know, through different schools, and the different awards they received on awards night, and, you know, the graduates with distinction, with distinction and honor, and the Tennessee scholars. So there's, there's about four pages, front and back, of award winners and scholarship recipients. And so, I'll give this to Gail and let her put this into the record at this time, and that way, everybody will have a copy of it later on down the road. I think JELICO's awards night's Thursday night, and so we'll get those, we'll get that list from them, and we'll put it in there at the same time.
What's the total awards?
Um, talked to Ms. Ayers today, my, by my rough math, it's well over half a million dollars in scholarships and awards. It may even go over, may go over a million. There were sixty-six seniors, the Tennessee achieves that we've heard a lot about, Larry's been working on, and Gretchen. The Tennessee achieves, sixty-six seniors will have their tuition completely paid for at Roan State, Walter State, or Pelosiapi State at Campbell County High School. So that's a, that's a worthwhile cost, too. So that's, that's well, good to see that program having some, some success. So I'll give this to Gail, and she can put this into the record at this time, and we'll get JELICO's, and that way, we can always remember what these students done, so, yeah.
You know, I would like to say something. I'm kind of biased on this list, but I've got to say something about my nephew. Yeah, uh, he's a lot smarter than Rusty, or I, either one, and he's, uh, he's number one, so I'm very proud of him. I don't know if he's back there or not, but I won't tell him that. If he's back there, if he's not. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I'm going to hang on to that.
All right, next up, the director's monthly report. Director Poston?
Let me make two announcements, and I too want to correct the later speakers. Uh, the Campbell County High School graduation will be Saturday at ten o'clock at Lincoln Memorial University. And then the JELICO graduation will be on Friday night, May twenty-four, seven o'clock, uh, at, at, uh, Church, Church, or something like that. And then, sometime during the week of June the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, one of those nights, I'd like to get with some of you, and maybe get you a poll of, uh, board members. Each quarter, we're going to be trying to have a, a session with our principals and our board members on that. We need to go over the teacher effectiveness data, hopefully, but then we'll get some figures. And, and, and at that time, also want to talk to you about, uh, the effect of the new tenure law, uh, on how the evaluation system and how teachers are looked at as far as, uh, their scores in tenure, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and we want to go over that, maybe, but then, if we don't have the, all the scores, we'll have some of the, what they call the five scores in, so, uh, we'll, we'll be able to look at some of the accomplishments of the schools this year, or how they're ranking on some of the tests. We're hoping to do that. Of course, there's a lot of training going on this summer to do yet with the Common Core, park test, balance assessment, we can go on and on and on. Uh, this time, and I'll make this brief, but I just wanted to make a few comments about, about the Common Core, or, where we are with that. But at this time, two years ago, it's, it's a real daunting and difficult task, I guess, that all of us were looking at. Forty-seven states now are involved with, with the Common Core initiative. But as most of you know, the Common Core standards, it's, it's a group of very rigorous academic standards that's designed to develop the skills, knowledge, competencies of students to increase college and career readiness. We talked about this earlier, during the, uh, budget session we had. Everything is, is changing with the attention all the way down, and the lower grades, we're drilling down to get the specifics of the information that kids need to learn. But we're trying to have students to think critically, trying to have them to apply that knowledge, solve problems, and effectively conduct analysis and synthesis. And, and all of this is part of this rigor of the Common Core. And this, hopefully, will help our children be more competitive and successful in the real world. I'm making these comments because I, I fully support, uh, where we are in our efforts to promote the Common Core, and I realize there's a lot of pushback in a lot of areas with, with the Common Core. Uh, the Common Core curriculum was originally designed, is by a group of educators, which served as the input of legislators and different, uh, different groups that studied how the best raise the academic standards and expectations of stu, of schools. But, but along with raising those academic expectations, and along with raising those standards, a lot of the state educational leaders wanted to move- leaders wanted to move to align those standards to the accountability piece, and so that's where you bring in the new teacher performance evaluation system, the principal's performance evaluation system. In the last three years, to give you an idea of how things changed, they've gone through three different principal's evaluation programs, and there's another one about to come out again, so they're still tweaking and working on those things. But what I'm trying to say is, everything ties together. The Common Core standards, the evaluation system, et cetera, et cetera. So, both our students' futures and both our professional careers, they're all connected in such a way that everyone must work together to achieve what they need to achieve. And what, the worry, I think, that concerns me to a great extent is, we don't lose the joy of teaching, and we don't lose the joy of learning. And I think that some of the things that have, that have come toward us or come at our way at such a fast pace, may have, may have brought some of that pushback from different areas. But it is my personal belief, and I think it's also many of the other directors from listening, several throughout the state, that we have tried to do too much too fast. And of course, we're trying to make that known, it's not just in Tennessee, it's in other places. I think what we've done here was add the accountability piece, maybe a little bit faster than some of the others have. I know Kentucky took more time to do some of their reforms than other systems have, and we can study all of those different systems and as, as a state, with legislatures and our professionals and what have you, but we're into this thing now, and so we need to, we need to at least see it through as best we can. But having said all of that, the one piece of the education reform movement that needs to stay, I think, in place with constant oversight for added improvements is, will be the Common Core standard piece. That allows the teaching and the learning process to continue, and even as that continues with the new initiatives, maybe we can, we can pull back some on the, the other part of the accountability and the testing piece now. And I say that because what's coming down the pack with the PARC testing, and that's something I could spend a lot of time on, but yes, the testing requirements are there, and they, they're still in place. Some of them will be in effect beginning '14, '15, but the main big year, we'll find out what we have done and what we are doing as a system, as a state, as, is '15, and '14, '15 down, down the road. Some real big figures and some, a lot of information will come out from that. I just really hope that we can stay focused on making sure that our children receive the best quality in instructional science, if that be Common Core standard, so be it. If, if, if all of the, those great mighty leaders out there, educational leaders and professionals see a better way, then we need to be willing to listen. But I think in Campbell County, I know we've got a lot of people looking at us, and we should, we're looking at ourselves, we want to pull ourselves up by the bootstraps in every way, form, and fashion, and we know the problems we face, we know the socioeconomic conditions, we cannot allow those things to be excuses. Academically, I think the Common Core movement is the way maybe to make some, make some additional improvements in the achievement side. The, all of the changes in the special ed program, as daunting and challenging as they are, I think in the long run, we'll see some of those children being blessed and helped in some of those initiatives. And every child, I don't care, I don't care if they're intelligence IQ, whatever you want to call it, I call it the intelligent index, but it doesn't matter if it's one or 1,000, if it's 50, 500, you know, they have a right to an education in the least restrictive environment, and the challenge is, is on us. Always hard to meet those challenges, but friends, we can't make excuses, we got to do what we can. But once again, I want, I want us to try to do everything we can to help, as a state, I hope we can help ease the tension of a lot of educators, because I'm afraid a lot of people, because of the pressure that's coming down through the test and what, we're not ready for the technological movements that are about to take place in this state on testing. We hear it every time we get together, it's major. We're talking about a broad range of problems that we're going to be looking at. We're not ready for it, so maybe, maybe, just maybe, they'll maybe back off a little bit. There are still some proven and tried materials out there that can meet the requirements of testing these kids in the Common Core curriculum, and so we may, we may have to go back to that or go into some of those things. And I could go on, but I just, I just felt I needed to share that, because there is a strong movement from different groups to can, not, not so much maybe in Tennessee as others, but to can some of the Common Core initiatives. If we're making progress academically in those things, we won't know the real fruit of those things for, for at least another year or two. But we've spent so much time in training, we've spent so much time and human effort to try to make a difference in a lot of these children's lives, and I just don't feel like we need to throw away. That's an editorial.
Is that a state representative campaign, or, I mean, that was pretty good.
It's just, it, I'll, it just, it just eats at me that, you know, we want, we want our kids to succeed, and we, as parents, I think, I think there's, we, you know, we can't go into the homes, and we can't make everybody the perfect parents, we can't have the perfect teachers, but friends, we've got no excuses not to follow a design like we've got in front of us, with proper training. I'll push.
Thank you, Donnie. Next up, recognized Jeff Marlowe, Director of Finance. Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll begin with the monthly financial reports. These are for our period ending March 31st, 2013. General purpose school fund, cash trustee of $75 million. Come over a couple of pages to see your revenue per day is at 76.5 percent. Notice the top of that one, your current property tax, 97 percent. As you know, that's the benchmark we use, 97, 98 percent by the end of March, and we won't make the 100 percent by, by the end of June. Give you a little advanced notice, we're close to 98.9 percent. Pretty painful, we got trustee report on that the other day. Page over, you see your expenditures, 71 percent roughly, 71.9 percent. So, five and a half percentage points to the good through the period ending March 31st. That has declined, facilitate future payouts in May, and you see the cash come down significantly after the end of May report by design. The federal project school fund, cash trustee of $532,000. It's a little bit more than our $500,000 cash reserve balance we have, so that's good news. Revenues expenditure are perfectly balanced with each other, as they should be, at 67.9 percent of realization from both revenues and appropriations. And then the final funds is cafeteria fund, cash trustee of $509,000. Over a couple of pages you see your revenues and expenditures as a comparative. For the time this year, we are at least at break-even with the advent of transfers in, we did a couple of months ago, so revenue's 76.2 percent, expenditure's 75.2 percent. As you can see, $60,000 in transfers in, the board could stabilize that situation and both back into alignment. That's all three of those operational reports. Any questions, I'll answer. And motion to approve all three funds.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm going to approve all three.
Motion by Mr. Ork to approve all threes, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill, any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Voting on approving the three funds' financial reports. Anyone wish to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk, please reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Birch, yes. Collins, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ford, yes. Orton, yes. Wilson, yes. Hushen, yes.
Next up, budget amendments. Mr. Marlowe.
We have five budget amendments for May sent out to you. Do you want me to discuss any of them in great detail, or?
Um, if you'll just, yeah, if you'll just go over the caption of each one of them, and...
The first one is realignment of local taxes due to some continued changes in collections. We're going to have more collections in current property tax, the version master, and the last thing, we have these collections second here, and if we can, as you can see, that's just about $48,000, $349,000, $348,000, $349,000 down, no gain. The budget number two deals with the appropriation of funds for capital outlay projects, specifically the appropriation of funds from the settlement of properties, the receipt of the insurance recovery proceeds, and we enter the requirement of, and then the savings generated from light winner and natural gas, and
Amazing.
beans being appropriated to provide for different project here, safety vegetables at Paul's School, replacements of mangos, CTHS, canopy at the bottom, NutriSchool, Elko Well, NutriGiant Cap lives, cafeteria in the access, and those are all appropriated on the D V B, and all centers, which are like, I did, so the account strength, Hill you, project school location number, or if it's the situation with security vegetables, O O nine eight beans, all the schools.
I have some questions. How much have you allowed for all the vegetables?
The appropriation for the building improvements in Coleman's $125,000, that is the third item down.
If, if the bids come in higher than that, where are we going to get the money?
We have to reduce one of the other.
We will? We're not going to go higher than $125,000, is that right?
That would be, you know.
We could take the other.
But if it did, are we going to come back and take it out of Capital Outlay, the rest that they left over?
Capital Outlay, yeah.
Does that balance, or whatever?
Capital Outlay or fund balance, yeah.
Didn't we add two or three schools that kind of might have went ahead of that?
Jellicoe High School and the alternative school. So, you're correct, that was probably six of them, about that.
If you look at the last line item in the increase section there, record?
Yes, sir.
The 251, 695.
Be what we have left.
That's the generic
Right.
noncommute for a specific project, so you could reduce that and increase to $125,000.
And did we allow, what did we allow for the canopy of the fall? 50,000?
50,000.
That's unbelievable. And we're paying only half the uniforms for the ban?
Well, the letter that the ban had sent requested half from the school board and half from the county commission, because they sent letters to the Board of Education and to the county commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's for the county committee. I got a copy of that letter.
Jeff, do they, I know they had our budget amendments before them last night, but did they have anything?
We'll put the pressure on them now.
Yeah.
You got that, Mike. Bruce, do you hear that?
I'm sorry?
Just, we'll talk later.
Okay, now, we actually have a bid sheet in here for the paving, is that all right? We actually know what it's going to be, is that right?
And is that the paving at the academy?
The canopy, did we, I know we've gotten a quote on it, and decided to send it back out. What happened with that, where we had with that, what was the new quote, or new bid? New bid, bid added to be
So, it's not, it's not been, okay.
So, how much was the charge from Brady on that, just curious? Five percent.
For the, when we brought you all in, how much, today I talked to you, but you didn't tell us exactly what the charge, the proposal for that would be.
Thirty-two fifty.
Is it 32 fifty? It's about five percent.
Thirty-two fifty.
Why is there such a big difference on the paving? You know, there's $10,000.
I was concerned about that when I seen it. I'm glad you brought that up, Mike, because we had it at 32 when we bid it before, and I don't know, I wasn't privy to the actual going over there and talking to them, but, does anybody, John, do you know anything about this?
I would know, I would, yes. And we used to expect this off of the old bid, and once I, the polling bought us so long, at that time, it grew a little higher than they are, basically, other than.
Now, we're going to pave this parking lot, or we, I mean, it's just going to be wide open, correct?
We need fence around it.
Yeah.
There is. And we passed a motion.
To do the fences, so this is, this is just paving only, right? This isn't inclusive with the fencing?
No.
Because I think if we're going to spend this money to pave it, it needs to be locked to.
Absolutely.
I agree with that.
Exactly right.
Hundred percent.
Well, that line item, I don't know where he said we got 251, but I
We'll be getting back in the cookie jar here, but we'll, we'll know, what, next month, at the latest on the remaining for the vegetables, or we should, we should, we should have everything back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Jeff, where are you getting that 251?
It's the line item in the increase section of the appropriations. See how it's broken into two sections? You have a subtotal there, the subtotal says 551179 in the middle columns.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Exhibit B.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Our subtotal in the increase section is 337.
Yeah, that's what's ours.
Our subtotal in the decrease section is 191. The difference is 146.
Yeah, that's what I'm got.
Hang on, Jeff, I have to get, I have to read some things here.
Mr. Julian, do you not have any scope, that's not bad on the vegetable, you know, on top of the vegetable, on the vegetable?
There's a review, but there's sheet where the, these two numbers together, the, there is no, four, six, see that, four, six, five, 11 on the guys at the bottom down there?
Yes, yes.
All right, that
Let's see here, is it unencumbered tooth 13?
And this
So, is that that unencumbered part at the bottom, the tooth?
Yeah, this, it gets combined to produce the $136,000 and the $144,000 that the president had gets combined to produce the 251. This has been revised, I'll get you
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, you didn't have the final versions.
So, we've approved 251,000 engineered capital outlay.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification with Mr. Marlowe. On the vegetables, we're just allocating that money. We've not put anything through the architect yet to put the number of schools right, or who, where we want that done, is that right?
Here's what I know, right?
Okay.
The very thing that I questioned when I saw this amendment was, how did we arrive at $125,000? Called the place central office to say, do you have a basis for this $125,000 appropriation? We were told, yes, they have price quotes that would support the $125,000. That's how this number got in there. That's the extent of what I know. Once it's bid, we'll obviously all, but there is no authorization, commitment, anything beyond appropriating that.
Thank you.
So, we're just setting the money aside, and the formal action will be when we accept the bids or, or not, if you're all over.
Now, we have, we have approved, correct me if I'm wrong, or I meant misunderstood, the fencing?
Yes, we did, to bid it, yeah.
We did bid it, or we approved it to go out to bid?
We approved it to go out to bid.
Go out to bid.
Yeah, last month.
Are you all doing that? No, sir, that's not getting brought before we do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We used to be experts in fencing here a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk about it.
Yeah, all right, Jeff, five dash three.
The fact that we, Hills, we had a summer panel completed on the project, you know, remember we had estimates for what our bond interest rate would be versus what actually came in, and we sold bonds cheaper than we originally estimated, and the closing cost was cheaper than originally estimated. And in the end of the day, you end up with producing
In same
proceeds, that could be for capital outlay projects, and you can have them identified in your site development, which would be real good for your fin- for your fin for 9750.
We just found it.
We just found $9,723. The, in addition, I sent, although this is not specifically remaining in this budget amendment, I sent you guys out an accounting on the first month on the solar panel.
Amazing.
And although this isn't a true accurate trail because you'll have better months and worse months, obviously in America it's going to be less. But at an average of $1,863, which is what we received this first time through, that is approximately $600 above the average per month on those nine schools that we had estimated would be produced. So as the worst month produced, we should be in the ballpark. Actually, we have a year's worth of that, I will know for sure. But as you can see, it's a lot of kilowatt hours, 72,784 kilowatt hour.
But for all those naysayers out there, and we have some here in the courtroom that didn't like our solar panel deal, the first payment was $16,000, is that right? Approximately for six weeks generates $16,000.
Yeah, sixteen, we got $16,767.25 off the first nine schools. And in June, they will complete the ones in the Jellicoe area. Of course, don't give them much money for those because it's on the nine cent rebate or the 12 cent rebate. But, yeah, we've got 17 grand for the first month of the box.
I have one question. Mr. Marlowe, how will that money get dispersed out to each individual school?
It will not. That goes to pay the bond, I believe. Yeah, remember, we're going to produce about $2,400 a year for each of the schools, is the plan, the whole.
At the end.
In the year, we'll send them out a check.
Yeah, at the end of the year, that's right. Right, right, I'm sorry. You're right.
So you're saying now we're six hundred dollars above the bill on what we expect?
Per side.
Six hundred dollars above and beyond the per side presently, but that's because you'll have this big month, April, Brooklyn.
A lot of sunshine.
And the whole sunshine now, when you get to December, November, December, January, February, you're going to have probably $700 a month, it's going to be $600 below.
I got you on that, you're right.
Let's see, that's three, got four. Four is just a realignment to traffic vocational project trips to regional state competitions. And then the last one is just a realignment between the carryover funds and the current year funds in the title one project, subfund 102, mostly going with increase in other supplies and pure volume between now and now, coming out of insert that without the force.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as read by Mr. Marlowe.
5-1 through 5-5.
Yes.
All right, there's a motion on Mr. Hill, is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Mr. Rither, any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk, please reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Pritmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oren, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right, next up, reviewing of bids, Jeff.
We have two bids, Karen. The first one is for security equipment for CCHS and KHS for our kind of week period. And as opposed to a dollar amount, because it's not yet known by the school system exactly what's on, if they're going to end up putting in, what ones are not, we have a unit price sheet to be approved. And the bidder is from FES Security. As you can see, it's your second payback on your attachment, and they have all these different items, 16 panel EDR, blah, 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 all the way down bigger. And as you can see, the bid prices, unit prices are on the far right inside, like 1913, $220 per eight floor. And the only bidder was FES, so the recommendation is to accrue the FES unit price bid, and then the board of the central office will select from those pre-established bid prices and decide what they're going to do.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Ork to approve the FES security unit bid prices, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bruce, is that all cameras at Campbell County Hospital in Jellicoe, or is that just a portion of?
That's just a portion. They'll be replacing and adding to the list.
Okay, so it's not the whole city. Are we going to get any money later on that we, you foresee can help out with that?
This grant, we're looking at up to the next three years, probably 35, 40,000 every year, going to Campbell County Hospital, Jellicoe Hospital. It's climbing. It's upgrading our cameras, bringing people in to train our teachers. It's basically set up to handle bullying and harassment. And they'll be bringing a big one, Nashville, to work with teachers. We were very fortunate in the fact that they allowed us to take our money this year to purchase the cameras. They came up and visited with us, we took them to Campbell County Hospital, Jellicoe, they saw the need and approved it on its spot. So, but to say we'll get this money to continue to upgrade.
Do you feel like it's a safety concern that those cameras are outdated, as they are, all of them?
There's no doubt about it. But it wasn't saying that Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Chilwell at Jellicoe, we give them exactly what they asked for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sarge, you got anything?
No.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the FES unit, security unit bid, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Pritmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Parking at Eastal Pollard Learning Academy. Mr. Marlowe?
We solicited for bids on the 25th of April, see nothing on the 9th of May. Received bids, two bids, Rogers Group, both here pays. Have a base bid price and then an alternate one bid price from both. Base bid from Rogers Group, 35.705. Alternate one, 38.463. Both here, 45.045. And alternate one, 52.875. Recommendation is to Rogers Group using the alternate one, 538.463, and this is the lowest that's bid, to meet the recommendation, following the recommendation of the assistant director.
What's the pleasure?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller to accept the bid from Rogers Group, is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Mr. Rither, any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Sarge. Sarge. All right, anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Pritmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oren, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right, permission to advertise for bids.
We had the fire, the insurance company paid for the wrecking for the suite of facilities and the ATAC and all that stuff. But the furniture and fixtures items had to be done locally. And we received the insurance recovery check from travel, letting you permission to advertise for bids to acquire the placement, furniture fixtures, supplies, stuff like that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? If you're ready to vote, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Pritmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oren, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
The next item there is the restoration concrete fixtures, CCHS. And the next part of that will be voted on in the June record session meeting. I'd say that's a real aggressive, it may be done. I doubt that that's going to happen in reality.
But we have two meetings. We have two meetings in June, right? We'll have to close out, so.
You could do it by the end. But on a record meeting, there's no way I'm not going to be, because you'll have to have the specs to do the advertising for a week in favor, blah, blah, blah. So even if we had stuff in hand tomorrow, it would be three weeks from that date, well, two weeks from that date because of the requirement of the paper.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Ork, any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Pritmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oren, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. No contracts, Mr. Marlowe?
No, sir, at the line item.
Thank you. Ms. Fay Comer?
whom I looked over last month, I apologize both to the board and to Fay. Ms. Fay Comer regarding the individual school activity funds, any questions or comments from Ms. Fay? Everything still good, Fay, with the books?
Good, the audience, and I haven't seen it personally. Mr. Hill talked to me about building phone, one finding segregation of dues. He has spoken with me about some internal management procedures to follow up on, and him on those, and he's good. And anytime you feel the need to speed up the meeting, feel free to speak. Anything else, any questions?
What's her name?
Thanks, Fay. Mr. Marlowe?
Before you all move on, in your day job, if you will, Marlowe, can you talk to Gary Williams about the $1,000 rebates associated with the nine schools? Expect for it need to be submitted soon as possible.
Okay.
I need you to do that before he goes on vacation next week.
And why you brought that back up, are you?
If you could get that done, that would be allowing to get $1,000 out to the schools this year before the end of the year, if not enough to carry over into next year.
Are you carbon copying the commissioners on this stuff you're sending to us on themselves?
On the solar panel? Oh, yeah.
I'll do that, yeah. Items for action. New A will be to discuss and take any necessary action to fund additional school resource officers or security personnel at all elementary schools and the learning academy.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Miller.
I had that put on there. I'd just like to add to what Mr. Poston, Director Schools remarked in his comments, that every kid deserves quality education and a plan. They deserve to be safe, too.
That's right.
And I know you all, if you weren't watching any of the news, you've noticed that I've tried to put a plan forward, which is just a starting point. I'm just one board member that feels very strongly that we're dropping the ball as a county that's been affected. We should be in the lead and the role model of other counties because we've experienced it. And this board did really well when we first came together in 2010 and put additional SROs at the middle schools, and we've kept that funding regardless of whether it's through grants or whether it's through general purpose money. But I feel strongly that we need more security or SROs at the elementary schools and learning academy. I know I've talked at length with Mr. Poston on this. I'm confident that he feels the need is there as well. So in that, I'm making a motion, I move that we hire eight additional SROs and send it to the county commission to ask them to fund it 100% in next year's 2013, 14 budget.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Wilson. This is to add eight additional SROs. And this is a request we'll be sending to the county commission to ask them to fully fund it. And if I'm not mistaken, state passed a law this year that said the county legislative body can give a one-time increase in funding without it affecting the maintenance of effort.
Absolutely.
Is that correct? The vibe that, I mean, that's, I've seen that, so.
But if they give it to you this year, what are you going to do next year?
Well, it would be for the 13, 14 budget.
Yeah. And I don't.
Looking at on that right there.
The sheriff tells me, and I think Mr. Marlowe has some figures, too, it's between 40 and 50,000 in office, if you go the SRO route. Now, I've done quite a bit of research with the security personnel with Knox County and how they're doing it. There's a lot of different things out there floating around, but there's a lot of different interpretations. And Mr. Cantrell, I'd like for you to, you explained to me the other day that Knox County were using, was using off deputy, off.
Even before you had the Sandy Duke shooting, school systems have tried to up the SRO option. You and I, when you did it, and now it's become more than. What occurred was after Columbine, a federal law came down requiring each state to pass the Safe Schools Law, essentially, School Security Act is what it was called. And municipalities were eligible for funding that could come through, not school systems, but actually local police departments, city police departments, sheriff departments, the school safety grant. Well, that money has kind of gone away, and that's how SRO officers, as we knew them, came into the school system, was primarily paid for by federal safe schools grant money. And once it left, schools were faced with the idea of, well, we like this now, what do we do to continue it? In Anderson County, to give you an example of what we've tried, we're right on the bubble for being too big for the SRO concept, too small for what the bigger systems do, where they will hire off-duty sheriff's department officers. If you go that route, you lose all of your federal money. You can't have it both ways. And we're just, speaking just from Anderson County, we're just not big enough in the county to go with the hiring the off-duty police officer route, because you have to hire a full-time central office person that's going to supervise them. And logistically, we really don't have enough staff of off-duty police officers to even cover our schools. I know that some of our sheriff's deputies go to Knox County to help them fill out. So that's the first problem you have is logistics when you do that. And second one is money. I mean, you don't get any federal money if you do it. So those are, you know, possibilities to do it. Just it becomes, it's like anything else, a money issue.
Well, I'd just like to get them involved in the conversation, and this is a way that we can do that. Mr. Ork, go ahead.
I'm going to support your motion because anytime you can ask the commission for more money, I'm willing to do that. But short of knowing, I don't think they'll approve it.
I don't either.
Johnny has been working on something, he and Donnie with the sheriff, is that correct? Your plan?
Yeah, let me.
And if Johnny come up, I'd like for him to explain it to us.
Let me say this, of course, you know, you hesitate to even look at an older plan if you can get, get that very thing to talk about. At the same time, we've talked with people throughout the state, and we were privileged to be in a safety conference last weekend, and we looked at some things they've done in Anderson County and other counties. We're trying to have, we're going to have a plan ready either way it goes, as best we can, to make sure our kids are covered. And I've got it, I've got that here, but I hesitate to give it to you. And the reason I do, don't get me wrong, it's a good plan, it's an excellent plan, but if it can be improved on, then I'll ask it to. And it's something you can look at, but it'll cover every school. Will it cover every school 100% of the time? I don't know. That's, I think this is start the conversation he's talking about. I know some of the people, the experts that were down there talking with us, that you may not want SROs in every school all the time, and gave us some creative ways to make that happen. But I think, I think the discussion needs to go forward.
Mr. Karen? Yeah, Mr. Marlowe. Schools? Yeah, Mr. Marlowe? I hesitate to say this because it's kind of like planting seeds, but I feel if I don't say it to you, then you'll feel like that you didn't get 100% of the information. So I'll tell you, and then see how it turns out. Most of you probably know, or have the general sense of using another detail, that the local funding is going to have an increase in the 13-14 fiscal term for education. I know it, thanks to the funding, maybe the G S, if that number is going to be 325,000. I also know, told his director, told Josh, I know his mentor, that the cost of six SRO, eight SRO officers is, on the average, about $345,000 per annum. There is absolutely nothing to prevent the county legislative body from saying, okay, we're going to fund your SRO request by giving you that which we already have to give you, the $325,000. Now, that doesn't mean that you have $325,000 new money to do something new with, because at the exact same time that that is happening to you on your local funding, your state earned funding is going down by a reciprocal amount. Now, what does that mean? That would mean that you're getting bold, unquote, new money from the County Commission that could be in response to this request, and you have absolutely no real new dollars to do anything with because the state funding is going to decrease. That's a real danger for you to push, position yourself in this particular situation like that. And I just say that to you so that you can understand, because I would hate for you to react to the fact that you are going to get about $325,000 minimum, new dollars from the County Commission, and you're going to have absolutely no new dollars to work with in your overall budget because of state production in the ADM. So I wouldn't want you to commit yourself to, yeah, we're going to spend that for eight SROs, because if you do, you means you're going to have to cut $350,000, $345,000 elsewhere to states where you work.
Mr. Chairman, can we word our motion to tell them that? That they can't do that, as far as given space?
It's not a can't they do it. All I'm saying is, if I were you, and I was going to try to make some wording that has some viability to it?
Yeah.
I would make it be request funding of approximately $345,000 for eight SROs after year three. You would have to have a commitment to pay for 100% for one cycle, one...
Johnny, the gist of it I get is Robbie has officers that need office space, is that correct?
That is correct.
And he's willing to provide that officer, say Carroll Elementary School, if we'll provide an office space to him, is that correct?
That is correct.
Dale, do you see a problem with that?
No. I mean, we try to barter with our municipalities a lot of times to do the same thing where we... Because we have city police departments that are always right across the street, it seems, from the school. And we try to do the same thing where we say, hey, if we can give you an opportunity to come here, will you come here free of charge? Now, I don't think, as long as they're under the sheriff's supervision, I don't see any problem with that.
So you've got a person that's a present in that school. They're there every day, and that's their home office. That's where they report. And Johnny, you mentioned something...
They have to be uniformed.
Yes. Well, they may not have to be uniformed. Some of the detectives are not, is that correct?
But they would have identification.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And they'd have a weapon they would carry with them.
Yeah.
So, yeah. As long as they're under the supervision of the sheriff, there's no problem with us making... I mean, we do that for other county services all the time. So it'd be like having an EMS station on one of your schools. So, no, I don't see any legal problem with that.
What about me?
We never... Yeah, our plan. And Wendy, she... This is basically where you're in Anderson County right now.
Yeah, we try to instill, to get them in there.
Not one school, though there's seven schools.
Yeah, they cover... We have one that, what, two at the high schools, and then for the elementary middle school, they travel. And then we try to give them some sort of a base they can come, and that's kind of their office when they're there. But if you've got one full-time there, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything.
They're not going to stay there full-time, are they?
No, but they'll have a presence there.
Yes, and that's a good idea. I applaud that.
And it doesn't cost us anything.
Mr. Ork, one thing that I've heard in this plan that I don't particularly like, and I'll have to voice my concern, is the sheriff told me that he was going to let the middle school SRO filter to some of the elementary...
Yeah, and I don't care much for that.
That's on the road. We're doing good at those schools. Let's don't, I think...
But I don't think it can hurt. I don't think what he's proposing can hurt us either way.
No, no, not that. But don't take, like, the SRO at Jacksburg and tell him to go down and check on Carroll and then go up and check on Jacksburg. Anything could happen while he was gone. So I, that was what I'd heard. Is that not right? That that was talked about?
Yes.
I wasn't privy to that, but I heard.
The SROs will be really trapped on. But in saying that, it shows that David Lawson will come into Jacksburg Middle School...
While he's gone.
Yeah, I agree with...
That's my only concern, Mr. Ork. I think it's a great idea. I applaud it.
Well, and you've got to thank Johnny and Robbie for working up the plan.
Oh, I know. I've not talked to Mr. Bruce, but I have talked to the sheriff, but...
I agree with Mr. Ork. I mean, all we can do is ask.
Yeah.
You ask the county funding.
If it doesn't work in three months, if it's not working for Robbie or his officers, we'll just have to try something else. But it doesn't cost us anything on the front end.
Mr. Chairman? I don't know exactly, Dale probably does, who has control of the school facility. My guess is, is the Board of Education, not the Director of Schools?
The principal controls your individual school.
Then how would the Board, what kind of action does the Board need to take to authorize or quench or direct the principal to make that space available for these guys to go into?
Technically, the Board wouldn't have to take any action because the principal controls the mechanical facility at all. Now, the director can come in and trump the principal. If the principal doesn't want to allow it, or does want to allow something, the director can do that. But the Board doesn't have any, doesn't have to do anything to let the principal make it space.
Dale, what we need to do, something like a memo, memorandum of understanding, would that...
Probably between you and the, if it's going to be just the sheriff's department, it's not going to be...
Yes, that's correct.
You probably need to have some sort of a memo between your office and the sheriff that says, these employees are under the supervision of the Campbell County Sheriff's Department, that, you know, there, we're just merely providing space in order to get a presence there, would be probably, yeah. And I can help you track that if that's...
There you go. My question, I'm trying to see what they need to take, any kind of action, the same thing.
But I will support your motion to send it to the County Commission.
You were asking about the space. I want to resonate with you, ladies and gentlemen, like that. I was talking to Nancy about it, and she said that she'd be willing to give her office there.
Oh, and I will add to that. The sheriff told me that the outlining schools is what scares him today.
That's the point of the problem.
Because these are real close to responding to. But those in the mountains, God help us if anything did, he can't get there in time. And of course, so this would be good if maybe some of those officers from that side...
And, you know, the worst-case scenario, we end up in three or four months, which we're behind in funding at that point, our budget's probably passed, but Robbie can't service those areas, then you're limited to maybe two or three you've got to come up with, rather than seven or eight officers you've got.
But I still want my motion...
We don't want SARS to be left out.
My other question, I'd like to give us this plan right here versus the Director, what is your recommendation?
Well, the Cadillac would be to have one at not every school.
Absolutely, yeah.
But what we've done, just in case that we're not able to do that, I mean, be real simple. We want something, we want some coverage, we want some safety features. We want to, we want to please protect residents in each school.
So in other words, what you're saying, if we don't get the money, the Commissioner will definitely bounce back to this point.
And he's worked with us, and Johnny worked diligently to come up with this plan and spent quite a bit of time, and at least it's a start. It starts the conversation.
Don't call me tomorrow.
Which on the other, and then this is option, if that fails, right?
Well, he can do this, mate.
We just need to provide that space.
Top of the question, Mr. Chairman.
Proper motion, proper motion?
Chairman?
Director, do you care to withdraw? Director, do you care to withdraw that?
Johnny's question.
Do you care to withdraw your...
Did we discuss this one time before? The high school, about the high school, Jellicoe, we need to get something in there, another window, so we can see who's coming in the door. Has anything ever done on that yet? That's on the vegetables and stuff going in Jellicoe High School, they were... Y'all voted on that, Andy, or is...
I thought we did. I just want to know if there's anything been done on...
Additional funding is going to be in the sheriff's department, if they think, officer. I don't need to ask that question.
Got to clarify the council. It's a good question. Right. We'll make sure it's in there. Mr. Hill? Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my original motion and would like to move on the new motion reworded with the request of 345,000 above the allotted amount we'll get for 325,000. Mandated increase.
Scott had one more question.
I've just got one question with this, with this motion. These eight additional officers will be through the sheriff's department.
Absolutely.
Not through us.
No.
We're not taking the sheriff's department out of the equation.
No, sir. I don't think we can do that anyway, can we?
All right. Everybody ready to vote? I've heard the motion by Mr. Miller, is seconded by Mr. Wilson, made by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Creepmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orych, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
Thank you. Good discussion.
Thank you, members.
Good discussion. Next up, consider an amendment to the Campbell County Board of Education Policy, D6-403, subsection one, related to headlights. Ms. Sharon Shepherd is here to explain the change for us. Ms. Sharon, if you'll stand or come up.
Mr. Chairman, the only change in that will be, we are moving from a light night get free to only light spring policy. They will be able to come to school again. So, and they will get instead of two, excuse that, since we're in that form.
And that's in accordance to CDC? Okay. What's the pleasure of the Board? Motion by Mr. Ork.
Let's just vote to do away with headlights.
Motion by Mr. Ork, seconded by Mr. Hill. Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, Hill, Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Miller, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orych, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
Thank you. Next up, consider amendment to Campbell County Board of Education Policy 6.200, dealing with attendance. Nancy, can you tell us the change here? And by the way, these are both on first reading. We'll have a second reading next month, so...
There are, I can tell you this, that I've made every year, we want some of Mr. Lawson and Truance. We, as a board, have decided a few changes that need to be made. On page two, I believe, and similarly tomorrow, here, there have been new changes on some of the laws that have been changed, so as I update, I just want to update everything. For last year, on page two, I took out a part about a legislation that's hoped about next year, we'll take this out anyway, about the abbreviated pages. So I didn't think that really required any attendance, so I took that part out of the attendance. I added on page one, that the principal shall be in charge. I added number six, ensuring that changes in students' addresses and phone numbers must be changed within SAR immediately. We have a very hard time getting people to Truance because they change their addresses and their phone number. Lots of times they'll write from elementary and write to the teacher, but they do not get it to office. Everything that we give comes from SAR, so we need that updated as possible. Also, I put that when they gave it to the teacher on the next page, that they would need, we'd give that to the office to be changed. The teacher would have that responsibility and activities. And also, I put the parent and guardian, we can't do anything if the parent and guardian is not cooperating. So I put that they must submit to the front office or to the teacher to give us that new information every time they change their address or phone number. Some of these do this monthly, some of them do it by season, but they tend to do that. I added on page four, added and clarified how when they get petitioned by the courts, juvenile court, I added that it could be a phone call. We've had some people that have, in my case, called in with someone's empty court, they questioned his authority, and since it has to be on papers, and therefore we have to get a call or voice officer or a constable to go out and do that, and that's kind of consuming. So we've added in there some clarification of that, that it is legal for a person to call in if someone's empty court. I also put on there that juvenile court laws, held moonlight at three, and it's according to Judge Noire's schedule, that. Also, we have Truance Board every Thursday. And I also added on there what times they should leave school, that some of them give the impression, well, I go to the court, I can be out all day long. That's not our problem, you know, what our concern is, so we don't want to do that. So what time they can check out, aren't they going to be in the court? And I gave ample time for Jellicoe and that area, and that to get over on this side of the mountain, the court and...
I can fault you.
And I have been known to the Truance Board at Jellicoe, like, there was a large number. It's totally about the... I added on page five, the lights. Also, there was a new law in the military that would give them 10 days to prepare to the court, or comes in for visitation, or comes back in, they get 10 excuse days. That is a law that is a... One big change that I have changed that I think the Truance Board would that, that they only get five handwritten notes per year. Therefore, if they're asked at five unexcused days, they'll get five handwritten notes, that's 10 days, that complies with what we used to have. The school board, well, the schools have done really good in giving it out, but a lot of parents do not read the papers that come home, or they do it, and they still think they get 10 unexcused acts as part of the year. And they only get five, and the five handwritten notes, when they have viruses and things. This is often what they take advantage of, okay? On page six, I have tried to clarify later arrivals as tardy. The only way we can code that in the computer is with a tee. So when we can see in the Truance Board, we know that the tee either is for later arrival to school or to class, or it is a tardy that they've checked out only to school, on school. Because we have a lot of them that will occur at 2:30, because they don't all sit in line for 10 minutes or pick that long line to pick up a child in there in the day. So if it's accessible on a 10, we'll bring them into Truance. I cannot take them to court, but I can take them to Truance.
I thought we were going to be making them up.
Well, and that would make your rides pretty retarded. Also, just to start with, early checkouts and later arrivals will start the whole day of the school, and getting ready, especially for anyone who's, if you get distracted with it, at the end of the day, you have to get on way, keep a footbag, step, and it just starts to open. So that's the same line with the making of a party. So we're trying to get away from that. Also, on page seven, some clarification of the driver and checkup also. Other than that, if I have to sign that, which is a no base, that I add.
All right. What's the pleasure of the Board?
If a parent doesn't give you the change of address...
If a parent doesn't check, give you the change of address, is there some kind of penalty you can oppose on that or?
A lot.
Yeah.
I've been given that for all nine some years and it's just, and if they never give them, like, I'll sit court and we will be in that time if I get found.
All right, is there a motion to rescind current version six point two oh oh and replace it on first reading with what Nancy's described?
I made motion, please.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Hill. Any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Now onto the addendum eight D, consider approving Campbell County High School soccer program and supplemental funding. You've got there later, it looks like, directed toward Mr. Poston from Sherry Chapman, Athletic Director, Campbell County High School, talking about, there was an interest meeting on April the 29th, they had 30 boys, 28 girls show up. Home games will be played at the fields behind La Follette Elementary, all T double S double A soccer rules will be followed. The county will provide money for boys and girls coaches, the boys head coach 2,000, assistant 1,500, girls head coach 2,000, assistant 1,500. Campbell County High School will play a junior varsity schedule the first season. Soccer's considered a major sport by T double S double A and so all games must be covered by an administrator. Soccer season consists of 16 matches plus tournaments. Girls soccer's played in the fall, boys in the spring. And like I said, the sign up was 30 boys and 28 girls. So what's the pleasure of the Board?
Absolutely, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Ork is their second, second by Mr. Creekmore. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Mr. Miller.
One issue I think we need to not overlook, this is adding a whole new sport to the Athletic Director of Campbell County High School. And it's a lot of work.
Yeah, 16 games?
And it's in the fall and the spring. So I think, you know, compensation wise-
Yeah, we're going to have to look at, at the athletic directors, yeah. I agree with that.
That's a good point.
I agree with that. Any further discussion? You ready to vote? This is for high school soccer at Campbell County High School. All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Yes, Lawson, no. Miller, yes. Ory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right, next up, this will be item eight E. This is to approve the Director of Schools to apply for K eight and nine 12 virtual schools through the state.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burge is their second, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? I will say, hopefully next Tuesday, we'll have, next Tuesday, I'd like to start at five to finish up our budget workshops and then have a presentation on the virtual schools. I think the mayor, Mayor Baird has been instrumental in this and so there's these K 12 program guides, has everybody got one yet?
No, no, I don't think you're-
Okay. And we'll get one to, Pam, we'll get you one and we'll get one to the press and to the Times too, for your information too. But this, this just allows Donnie to apply for a virtual schools K eight and nine 12 because there's an end of made deadline. So are you ready to vote?
Let me ask Donnie. Donnie, how many students have we lost to the virtual, is it 30?
Thirty-two from Campbell County, but they told us the other day, our numbers were pretty small compared to most of the area.
Yeah, we lost over 100.
Amazing.
Statewide, the one in, in Union County has 40-something hundred students. Now, state's put a cap on it.
1,500?
Yeah. And that's K through eight, you have 1,500 and eight, nine through 12, you have 1,500.
Did they take this program away from Union County because it didn't achieve? There's a lot of questions about, I'm for this, but I'm asking a question. I read when they gave them their test after they went through this, they didn't do so hard.
I asked the very same question.
Okay.
And in fact, I guess I asked one of those ladies, questions that are normally not asked, but I've got some mixed feelings about the program, obviously. And, because you know, you want the kids to get a good education.
Right, right.
Questions like, do they have their teachers, are they totally qualified, certified? How do you monitor the time online? What kind of in-service, pre-service do they have? Lots of things like that and what are, what kind of oversight's given to these kids? I mean, dozens and dozens of questions were asked and the only thing that this does, this doesn't obligate us any, it gives us a picture of what I guess this next generation of educational, this big move is, and it's going on now and, but this may be the way with the future as far as that goes, but I'm still an old public ed guy, I'll obviously be perfectly honest with you, but I think it's worth looking at. It might mean a lot of income to this county, of course, I'll be honest with you. If kids are getting a good education, fine. I've always said, give me a good shade tree and a good teacher, I'd have school. You know, it's, it's not about the position and the place and what have you, it's, are they getting a good education? So those are the kind of things that they need to prove, I think. Now, this will give us an opportunity to let them, give us a showcase of what they've got. And full, the full amount of money that the people that sign up for these classes, and it's not for every student, obviously. And, and for some children, it's only a short stop along the way, maybe if they need some recovery classes, maybe they have some sicknesses, maybe they have some phobias, different thing. Or some people just trying to get out of school and, and hide and, and they'll show you some of the guards that are built in there. But we get full funding as though that they were in school. The full amount of money that is spent, that they were enrolled in Campbell County School would be sent for that child. Now, the percent in Campbell County would get small, but-
It's 4%.
And then, of course, so much I think goes in the county coffers, but you're talking somewhere possibly around a six-digit dollar of added income. But I caution, we look, not look at the, at the financial side of it, it's out of our hands, it's not in the school board's hands, it's in this private organization, runces. They, they pay for rent for their people, they have their own, they have their own sites where they test the children. They have programs down in 38 states.
The only personnel involved in our system is the principal, is that right?
Well, actually, the principal is employee of theirs and all their employees are and will employees.
Ah, okay, I must read this thing.
Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Craig Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ory, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. And final item under items for action is to approve to put out an RFP for a virtual school K eight and a virtual school nine through 12. Again, not obligate, it doesn't obligate us to anything, we're just requesting a proposal.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burge is their second, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? Dale, and that's the right lingo, right? We're not, obviously, we're not obligating ourselves with this RFP, so. Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye.